Meeting called to order.
Okay, T-shirt.
Mr. Rizan, can you please see this?
Yes.
And the pledge of allegiance.
Please rise. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your authority, which stands as one nation, one God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Rizan. Public comments, oh, first of all, roll call. Anybody here?
President, President, President.
Approval of agenda.
So move.
Second.
Second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed, I mean approval passed. Public comments on items not on the agenda at this moment could be heard. Nobody with any comments not on the agenda? Okay. Consent items, regular planning commission meeting minutes for August 24th.
Chair, I went through the minutes, they appear to be correct, so I would move to approve.
Move to approve, is there a second? All second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Business items, public signing of the City of Callexco Code of Ethics by Planning Commission members.
I guess this is in regards to Jason Young?
Yes, sir.
And where, what do you need from us?
He's sworn in?
That guy, he's already been sworn in, so what do we need to do?
Usually Gabby does this.
You were sworn in last, the last meeting, no, your first meeting?
Yes, he was, yes. Gabby.
Is it a form that Gabby needs to give to me?
Mr. Servin, what's our city attorney?
I don't know.
Okay, where's our person taking the minutes?
Is this meeting official, no attorney, no Gabby?
We have two interim attorneys, so.
And what about someone taking notes, like for example, are they gonna go based off the recording?
Mark.
Mark, okay.
Well, I guess he has shorthand, but I don't see him scribbling anything.
Okay. Well, let's see, let's see if Gabby's coming. That one.
No, if he was swearing already, he's gonna be swearing again, that's twice, you know, that's probably, uh.
Were you sworn in, Mark?
Yeah.
Yes, maybe she meant just sign the paper.
Maybe second, swearing, yeah. First one.
Yes.
Oh, you know what?
Who made the agenda?
I gotta do the 700 form first, and I was waiting for the city attorney to help me.
It might be disqualified.
He needs to do the.
Who does the agenda, Gabby?
Jason, you may have to sign that, there's a page in there, the whole kit that you have to sign.
I think that's what it is.
I think he has to read it, he has to read it.
You gotta look at page four of the Code of Ethics.
You have to read the whole thing.
Read the whole thing.
Oh, yeah, guide her, yeah.
Code of Ethics.
You have to read the whole thing in order, so we can go forward.
Where says, "City Code of Ethics," way in the back.
Oh, yeah.
It's like a three or four or five pages, and then have to sign it at the end.
I got this in my office.
And leave a deposit for $500, please.
Non-refundable.
Non-refundable.
Can I borrow 500 bucks?
For the mental anguish that we have to go through.
Again, and again, and again.
How we doing, Mark?
Yeah, we said we could just read one of the pages and then.
Yeah, that's how we, that's how we.
Okay, all right, so which is the moose?
No, the city code, he has, he has to read the whole thing.
Okay, you have to read the whole thing.
Or it says preamble, starting from the preamble.
Let us give you a, I'll give you a cue when you're ready.
Fire away.
The citizens and business of Callexco are entitled to have a fair, ethical, and accountable local government, which has earned the public's confidence for integrity in keeping with the City of Callexco's commitment and excellence, the effective function of democratic government, therefore requires that public officials, both elected and appointed, comply with both the letter and spirit of the laws and policies affecting the operations of government. Two, public officials be independent, impartial, and fair in their judgment and actions. Three, public deliberations and process be conducted openly unless legally confidential in an atmosphere of respect and stability. To this end, the Callexco City Council has adopted a Code of Ethics for members of the City Council and the City Board, commissions, and committees to assure public confidence and integrity of Callexco City Government and its effective and fair operation. Principles. One, enacted in the public interest, recognizing that the stewardship of the public interest must be their primary concern, members will work for the common good of the people of Callexco and not for any private or personal interests, and they will assure fair and equal treatment of all people, claims, and transactions coming before the Callexco City Council Boards, commissions, and committees. Two, comply with the law. Members shall comply with the laws of the nation, the state of California, and the City of Callexco in the performance of their public duties. These laws include, but not limited to, the United States and California Constitution, laws pertaining to conflicts of interest, elections, campaigns, financial disclosure, employer responsibilities, and open process of government and the city ordinance and policies. Three.
Start beginning with the microphone, Mr. Commissioner Young.
Go.
You had to start all over again.
After you done with three, just read the titles of each of the six things, and then start all over with the implementation.
Implementation.
No, and then resume reading.
Yeah. Okay.
Just read the title from three.
Okay, just.
Yeah, four, five.
Okay, okay, so act of public interest.
Yeah, after you finish three.
Okay.
Conduct of members, the professional respect of the process, conduct of public meeting, decisions based on merit, communications, conflict of interest, gifts and favors, confidential information, use of public resources, representation of private interests, advocacy, policy role of members, independence of boards and commission, positive workplace environment, implementation. As an expression of the standards of conduct for members, expected by the City of, the City, the Callexco Code of Ethics is intended to be self-enforcing if it therefore becomes most effective when members are thoroughly familiar with and embrace its provisions. For this reason, ethical standards shall be included in regular orientations for candidates for City Council applicants to the board and commissions, and newly elected and appointed understand the City of Callexco Code of Ethics. In addition, the Code of Ethics shall be annually reviewed by the City Council, boards, and commissions, and the City Council shall consider recommendations from boards and commissions and update as is necessary. Compliance and enforcement, the Callexco Code of Ethics expresses standards of ethical conduct expected for members of the City of Callexco, City Council, boards, and commissions. Members themselves have the primary responsibility to assure that the ethical standards are understood and met, and that the public can continue to have full confidence in the integrity of the government. The mayor and the chairperson of City Council-appointed boards, commissions, and committees have the additional responsibility to intervene when actions of members appear to be in violation of the Code of Ethics are brought to their attention. The City Council may impose sanctions on members whose conduct does not comply with the city's ethical standards, such as reprimand, formal census, or loss of committee assignments. The City Council also may remove members of boards and commissions from office. A violation of this Code of Ethics shall not be considered a basis for challenging the validity of a council, board, or commission decision. I affirm that I have read and understand the City of Callexco Code of Ethics.
Simon, go ahead, Simon.
And give it to, to Mr. Morales.
Let me give you this form, Simon, that we, that we can give to Gabby.
Informational items, number three, Sustainable Communities Planning Grant.
The Sustainable Communities Planning Grant, in early 2013, Callexco was selected as one of the 42 cities in California to receive a Sustainable Communities Planning Grant. The grant program is administered by the State Strategic Growth Council and Department of Conservation pursuant to Prop 84. The grant provides funds to cities to conduct planning activities that promote one or more grant objectives, the objectives such as, one, promote public health, increase housing affordability, promote infill and compact development, protect natural resources and agricultural lands, reduce automobile usage and fuel consumption, promote water conservation, promote energy efficiency and conservation, strengthen the economy. For the City of Callexco, the funds from the Sustainable Communities Planning Grant were dedicated to the completion of three major tasks, which are, task number one, targeted general plan update, task two, climate action plan, task three, agricultural element. So tonight's presentation is informational only, no recommendation is being suggested by staff, and no decision is regarded with the planning commission. Again, the presentation only is informational and a status report of sorts. I have the consultant, Ralph Castagnella, here to address any questions you may have. He, he's gonna give us a short little presentation, not to go too long.
Ralph? Thank you, Nick, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. As Nick mentioned, the city was awarded planning funds in 2013 to complete additional planning research on three items, a targeted general plan, that is, taking a look at the general plan, seeing might need to be updated, a new agricultural element, and then also a climate action plan, which is really a plan on how state and local measures can reduce greenhouse gas emissions in terms of what they might be projected in the future in 2020 and 2030. As Nick alluded, we are now at the end of doing the planning research on the draft documents. The, per the agreement between the city and the state, only draft documents need to be transmitted to the state as evidence that the project has been completed, and in fact, some preliminary drafts have been already submitted to the state for their review. The state is not involved in approving the documents per se. They are basically reviewing it to make sure that what was in the agreement in terms of deliverables has been completed. The state does not expect cities, as a part of the process, to have gone entirely through the draft document stage, the SEQA environmental stage, as well as the public hearings before the planning commission and city council, all of which lead to an adoption of the items. They recognize that that additional work would probably take a year and a half, and they like to limit projects to 24 to 34 months, 24 to 36 months maximum. So we are now at the end of completing the planning research, getting the draft documents ready to submit to the state, and closing out the project. The project closeout period will take about three months to complete all the paperwork according to the state. As a result of that, what we've, staff and us have discussed, the timing to bring back in more detail consideration of all these documents, probably looking to like January 2016, or soon, as soon as the state is giving its blessing and closed out the grant. I would like to discuss a little bit with the planning commission, the general plan, and particularly the land use element, just to give you an overview of how it's been approached thus far. The general plan was adopted in May of 2007. At that time, the general plan included the seven mandatory elements of land use, circulation, open space, noise, and safety. It also included a housing element, which was updated in 2013. The planning commission approved that document, the housing element part of the update, in December of 2013. City Council approved it in January of 2014, and the housing element really is good to go for another period of time, it's not due for an update until the fall of 2021. In addition, the 2007 general plan included what are called optional elements, and there were three in the general plan, public facilities and services, parks and recreation, and economic development. Those were optional elements, not required by the state. In terms of the land use element, which is the key part of not only the general plan, but the key part of the entire process, much of the work went into digging into what changes and amendments had been made since the May 2007 adoption of the general plan. In taking a look at the files, the mapping, and so forth, there were seven major amendments since 2007, beginning in 2009, and ending with the Mega Park project. If I can, I'd just like to go over to the map and outline a couple of the areas. So church as a land use element, we see as the key part of the, all the documents. They're not starting to become all of the terminology, but more geography. The seven amendments came before this, I will refer to this area as the casino, Mega Park, Palazzo, Estatal Zone, which went from commercial to high density residential. All industrial from the ground, cobblewood, railroad track, changing some of this from DP, business park, to industrial. And then Grand Plaza, phase one and phase two. Now, for the moment, we realize that Palazzo is not incorporated part of the city yet, but replaced it, and we'll be there nonetheless, assuming it will be a part of the city sometime next year. I think it's still going to, to happen. And then phase two, Grand Plaza, has not been fully processed, but again, for purposes of calculation, we assume that's the case. So, we have a lot of detail in the documents and so forth, but in some, in some way, there was changes from residential to commercial, from commercial to residential, from DP to industrial, and from industrial to commercial. The sum of all that is that there was a decrease in the housing capacity of 1,250 housing units, so there was a drop in the potential housing supply. Even though that was done, the housing portion of the general plan wasn't able to get certified by the state, but the city was able to demonstrate that there was still sufficient sites to accommodate the state's needs. So what takes up the capacity and margins is in terms of additional commercial space and additional industrial space, within these seven areas, there was a net increase in jobs potential of 30,000 jobs. That's over and above what was in the 2007 general plan. So that was a plus for the jobs standpoint, in terms of the aggregate effect of all the commitments. So what is going on is being done from 2007 to 2015, there'll be a new official, eventually land use map, which will reflect essentially the 2007 general plan, 2017, plus the amendments, except that we have some couple of technical corrections. First of all, after assuming that the city, there were two small office commercial areas on the birch tree. We felt as staff and consultant, that an office commercial designation for only two small areas on the birch, probably was not needed, because highway commercial allows office commercial. So the draft document takes out office commercial, and then we designate those two small sites from office commercial to highway commercial. With industry of influence, the area from Jasper, East of Illinois, was highway commercial and medium density residential in the 2007 plan. Staff and consultant are suggesting the commission that the medium density residential be deleted and replaced with median with highway commercial. Under the 2007 plan, there was a potential of medium density residential category for about 950 units, presumably. The feeling, discussion was that perhaps residential was a good use next to one of them, and therefore, the draft document is suggesting that that is changed to median into highway commercial, all of them. The other major suggestion in terms of the sphere of influence is that essentially all the area outside the city limits, but within the sphere, be designated RSP or residential specific plan. The 2007 general plan designated those areas RSP also, but they also designated areas as RSP 1, 2, 3, 4, and so on, and allocated land uses to those areas, approximately like 60% residential, 20% commercial, and so forth. What is being suggested is instead of trying to gaze into the future, 20, 30 years, that those broad categories be replaced with the RSP residential specific plan, so when the owners are interested in doing something with a property, that they come to the city with a specific plan that indicates a balanced land uses and so forth, that the city can then take more detailed consideration at that level, rather than trying to really forecast that part of the future in terms of what should go to those areas. We're asking, or the latest suggestion that the owners, the owner was proved to the city, that they're coming in with a balanced specific plan, that will be implemented to the city in a way that's, in general, those are broadly speaking, the major way in which the land use element was constructed, and the overall result of making those kinds of land use decisions since 2007, the 1900s. Very broadly, in terms of presidential, it's basically staying in attack, there's potentially potential for 7,000 more units within the city limits, developed and been approved by the commission and council, and on vacant land. So that certainly is enough housing to accommodate the state mandate it needs in terms of 2021, and probably when the next cycle comes, from 2021 to 2029. But in summary, that's some of the main points here. In terms of very summary recommendations, we think that the update of the zoning code is really important, not only for the land use element, but for downtown and other areas of the city. Right now, there's an inconsistency between the general plan and zoning in terms of allowing mixed use in the downtown area. So we're thinking that the zoning code update should be restarted. It has started, and I think because of funding, it didn't, but it ought to be updated, not only to address specific needs within the city, but also making it more large, getting rid of the inconsistencies within the zoning code and so forth. Not only, if it's not possible to update in track, or certainly focusing on certain areas like the downtown, mixed use in the downtown, and getting that, but the second thing would be, I think the commission is expressed interest in mixed use in other parts of town, would be possibly to look into a mixed use under a zone, that property owners would request be applied to their property, so they could do mixed use outside of the downtown area. A secondary recommendation, consideration is that the cities start preparing what are called annual general plan progress reports, and these are these reports that come from the commission in March or April each year, and itemize what's been accomplished in respect of each element of the general plan, what kind of housing's been added, what kind of projects have been processed, what amendments have been in place, and what the commissions would be considering. So mainly to keep the commission and the council informed annually, we've done it in a sense of looking at 2009 to now, but I'd like to, the commission to be as informed as possible as time goes on, annually, on what's happening in terms of the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castagnella. Is there a continued presentation, or are you going to ask questions now?
Ask questions.
Commissioners, questions, please. When I read this, it kinda sounds like you're telling us how you spent the $259,000, right? Researching all this, that's what, that's what you're telling us?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, okay, I want to just get that clear. What did you do to promote flood, I mean, to control flood control and safe drinking water? How did you, how did you do that? How did you advertise, what did you do about it?
No, this is just a plan. It's a, we're not doing anything yet, as of yet, we're still continuing with our policies and such. What we do now for flood control is that we have every developer, they provide an analysis of the potential rainfall, and then what the outcome is of the rainfall, and how they're gonna contain it to reduce flooding. So the entire city is designed to sustain 100-year flow with a new area. The old area, obviously, was not, and we didn't have any standards until, oh gosh, maybe about 20 years ago. And in addition, what complicates it here for Imperial Valley as a whole, and Callexco being one, one of the cities, is that the whole valley is flat, essentially, and so we're not, we're not like other areas that have hills and such, where we can take in the water, then the water would flow onto rivers and onto the sea or the ocean. Unfortunately, the only canal system we have is for irrigation wastewater, and which is not conducive to floodwaters. So about 20 years ago, all cities regionally worked something out with IID, wherein IID would accept the storm drainage, but not at one time. The policy was to have the developers hold water, the 100-year storm, onto their site, and then eventually re-release it into the IID system. So in effect, we don't really have a stormwater system, but we kinda do, the retention basins being them, those facilities, and of course, as we know, they're being used as parks too, so, you know, there's, you have negatives and positives there. Does that answer your question?
Nick, I want to make sure you understood your question.
Can your person, the mic, please?
Yeah, I want to make sure I understood clearly. The city's prepared for like excessive drainage, but not real flood, is that what you said?
No, no, we have designed to contain the flood, the 100-year storm.
Oh, the 100-year storm.
Right. A 100-year storm, which.
What does that mean?
Well, every year, there's a possibility that you can have that 100-year storm.
It's one flood for hours, raining for hours or days.
It comes once in 100 years, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, essentially, we get three inches of flow or rainfall in one hour. That's equivalent to 100-year storm.
The last flood, 20 years flood, or what?
Last flood, last year?
Characterized, yeah. Presently, we're.
Presently, when we had the last rain, the last-
I don't know, but it wasn't even close to being 100-year storm.
No, but how do you categorize? Do you have 20-year flood, do you have 50-year flood, or just 100-year flood?
I don't know. In order to do that, I used to work for flood control in County San Diego. The way we used to do it is we'd have to go out to the rivers and while it was flowing, we'd have to take measurements, velocity and depth measurements. And then we have a cross-section. Given the cross-section, Q equals VA, we would calculate how much flow goes through there. Being that, then we go into the hydrology charts and find out, okay, is that equivalent to a two-year, five-year, 20-year, et cetera?
Measurement.
Unfortunately, we don't have that luxury here.
Thank you.
Any new property or any, yeah, any new land to be annexed for the next eight years to the city of Callexico? And do we have the capacity to handle that? If there's any new land to be annexed to the city?
Yes, well, the one we have is the one that Rafael just mentioned, which is the Palazzo-
Oh, that's, it's going through LAFCO right now?
That's going through annexation process right now.
Okay, anything else or?
Well, we have a sphere of influence which really encompasses a lot of areas that goes all the way to the-
Newport?
Well, yeah, not to the Newport, but to the canal system, the All-American Canal on the east side. And then, of course, we have all the west side to the All-American Canal and north to just south of Jasper, with a little leg up 111 to Heber.
That means that it has to be in the sphere of influence before it becomes annexed, right? This is like the first-
Those areas are supposed to annex first, right. There was some talk that they wanted to annex all the way out to the Newport of entry on the east side. And LAFCO, I think they're out there to try to keep this in line and not hopscotch around. Because that's why LAFCO was developed in the first place, because cities were hopscotching. And what suited them for their benefits, it really wasn't planned growth, it was just crazy growth. So LAFCO was started to, I guess, help us from ourselves and have us orderly grow with the facilities to match the growth. Not the other way around.
Smart growth.
Yeah.
Oh, Nick? Oh, Nick, can you explain to me what the infield development on your map, exhibit LUE 5 is? And I'm pointing at Prima Vera, Villa Prima Vera, site number eight. I can't tell from this five-by-seven map where is that? It's on page 226.
Nick was also going to mention in response to the question, commissioner's question in terms of adaptation and so forth, the sort of area plan with the update, which will be taking a little projection, how much the city can accommodate in terms of existing services and facilities and so forth. So it'll be a brand-new update of the plan.
Yes, we have to do that before we can annex any other property.
You want to ask them generally about what the sites are?
Yeah, where specifically that, Villa Prima Vera? The Villa Prima Vera, I can't tell from that map where that exact location is. Yes, I know, but where exactly is that at, like the map, like the street or?
Meadows Drive?
Circle K?
Yes.
So it's just that bacon lot?
Next to the Classical Family Parks, to the west.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
It would be the home of the-
Okay.
Meadow and Rancho Frontera, is that what it is?
Yeah, Rancho Frontera and-
The front portion that is undeveloped, right? Or the adjacent to the existing?
There is adjacent to the existing, I believe.
Okay. It's under construction already. Wouldn't that be like- Up here, up here, right, right, right. That will be somewhere in here.
Right here, somewhere, I think right here.
Where's Rancho Frontera?
This is Rancho Frontera, right?
Oh, Central Main Canal, All-American Canal. Villa Prima Vera is right here, right here. LDR. Is it HDR or LDR?
It would be HDR and a D E.
Because if it's-
It would be these 48-year, four-year projects that's already under construction.
If it's HDR, the map is wrong then, because it's showing it as LDR.
There's the problems here, there's no vacant lot here.
Uh huh, there's no vacant lot.
This is vacant.
That is vacant.
This is Circle K, right?
Uh huh, uh huh, correct.
It would have to be correct in terms of-
Unless it's incorrect in here.
To develop an almost 20 years per acre zone would have to be cost-
So then it's wrong here. Yeah, because this one calls it HDR. Right, 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 right. It will be, yeah, it'll be copycat to that zone. So then the map is, needs to be correct. Just the notation. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Go ahead.
Is this, Nick, to Nick, Nick, I'm sorry. Is this an update to the, of the existing general plan of 2007? Or is it just a piggy ride of what is in existence? Because I don't see any of the information really updated.
So the question is, is this-
Is this new information or just existing information?
No, it's new information, for example, in terms of whenever we refer to population forecasts, housing forecast, employment forecast, they're the most recent ones available. When we refer to land in terms of being vacant or approved, that's all been updated from the prior 2007 plan.
Okay, where are we with the new fire police station? Is that project still not in the works? So we still haven't purchased the land or anything? Because that's supposed to be part of the bonds and all that.
They selected out of six sites, I think they've come down to one site. And I think there's some other work. I'm not involved in that project, but just from what I've gathered, talking to Pete, city manager, they're pretty close to selecting, then they have to hire architect, architect has to prepare the plan. And it's going to take some time.
So it's not going to be done within the next five years?
It'd be kind of tough.
All right, one other thing. Is there a map that shows or depicts where are existing and the proposed sphere of influence is? Or, because I don't see it.
Yeah, there's no change in the sphere of influence.
The sphere of influence is staying the same?
Yeah.
And with all the annexations, proposed annexations, we don't have anything?
Nothing new, other than Palazzo.
That's it? I thought there were some other ones to the north.
There were some others, I guess, what would you say, 2007, they were hot and heavy and then everything just dropped out. Yes, to the north of the Central Main Canal. There were all those properties going all the way to Balker that were going to be annexed into the city.
You also had one that was approved south of 98, between Rivera and Balker.
Right, you know, the Rock Ranches.
What happened to that one?
Again, you know, develop it. But that's within the sphere of influence.
Right.
Okay, but when those are approved, don't they have a expiration date of some sort? Where those plans are no longer valid and they have to resubmit?
Yep.
So in all likelihood, if they were to try again, they would have to resubmit. I think it's beyond-
Oh, yeah, it's-
Okay. Because since it was approved by planning and council, I've been waiting for something to develop there. And that's already been several years.
Yeah, about two years ago, developer of Vanessa wanted to come back and restart it. And then, well, that didn't go anywhere. And then we had Las Palmas, La Hoya Palmas, same thing, nothing happened. So, you know.
So right now, the only viable one is?
Yeah, they're just poking around, see what's-
The 2007 is now will be updated when?
2007.
The master plan?
General plan?
The general plan?
Yeah, next year.
Next year.
This is just a draft, right?
Actually, we're already putting out RFPs. And the first round of RFPs that we requested, we didn't have anybody submit. So we're hoping somebody submits this time.
And do you have a budget for that?
Yes, we do. I don't know what it is, Rob, something like that.
Is there any grant money that we are applying or it's coming?
Do we have what?
Any additional grant money that we applied?
We're looking into several, let's see, we have transportation, we have bike, we have a PET study. We have, let's see, airport, we're constantly expanding over there. We just finished one over there. I'm looking to several others. I have the bridge seismic study. I lose track. We got quite a few.
Do we have the bike?
And we're always looking for more, we're looking, go ahead.
The safe route to school, is that part of it too?
Yeah, that's coming up. And I think they have a public outreach next week.
Yeah, on the 18th.
Yeah.
Right.
And regarding this, where says successes was able to complete three of the five climate action planning milestones? What's the timetable for the other two that were not completed?
At BS here to run.
Number three is on page, well, it's on page three.
Successes, number three.
After B, draft climate action plan.
What page?
Three.
Oh, you're talking about the milestones? Essentially, what that is saying is that the grant covers milestones one, two, and three. Once the plan is adopted, then you have a certain series of measures that would be implemented. And so as those are being implemented, that would be reported back to commission and council.
So once it's accepted, four and five will immediately kick in?
Oh, when would they kick in?
When would they kick in? Four and five?
My guess would be, would be that after it's been approved, let's say it's mid-year 2016, you'd probably start reporting back to commission and council mid-year 2017. Some of milestone four might take the form of ordinances, for example. Or it might take the form of looking at the HERO program, which was adopted by the council, which provides funding for efficiency improvements. It could take like reporting back to commission and council how many homes have been improved through the HERO program, which was adopted by the city council.
You mentioned, what is the rule of thumb in the sphere of influence? Since I was touched on a little while ago? What constitutes, what defines the sphere of influence as far as the distance is concerned? You're talking about all the way to the American Canal, why the All-American Canal?
I'm not sure how they arrived at those limits, it's hard for me to tell. But typically speaking, you do a service area plan and that gives you a pretty good pulse of what facilities you have now and conceivably what you can expand to in the near future, five years, 10 years, and so on. Given that, then you project out what your sphere is going to, limits are. So what our sphere is in relationship to our service area plan, I wouldn't know.
One question. When we're touching back on the zone, you know, on the flood zones, the rains and all that, when is that flood map going to be updated or has it been updated? Because the last time I asked for the flood maps, they were still the same ones from back on 1990-something.
Okay, let me just go get clarification to be what you think flood map.
There is a specific flood map designation zone.
Well, the flood areas are typically FEMA maps-
Right.
Having to do with insurance. And those haven't been updated in years, probably won't for many, many years. Because again, we don't have any specific rivers that are subject to flooding other than New River and other tributaries outside of our city. I can tell you like for example, San Diego and the coastal areas, there's a bunch of flood areas that FEMA has mapped. We are fortunate in the sense that we're flat, okay? So the only concentrated area flow is the New River. So the rest of the, the rest of the city is subject to sheet flow. Sheet flow being-
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, so we don't have, the balance of the city, with the exception of the New River corridor, is free from flooding.
But I, I thought I was under the impression that those flood maps need to be updated periodically together when you update your sphere of influence, so that it could reflect the same map?
Well, we take into consideration because we have to show it.
Right.
But the flood maps, those FEMA flood maps, I'm not sure that we, the city, hired a consultant to prepare those because-
Well, back then, it wasn't necessary for you to hire a consultant. All we had to do was submit the most updated city map with the new sphere of influences so they can update them themselves in their FEMA headquarters.
Yeah.
And then as a result, you know, they would have the most accurate information based on our city growth.
I think we have more detailed information in the FEMA. If you look at the FEMA maps, they're very general, you can't really-
That's why, yeah, because like I said, the last time I asked, they told me they had not been updated yet. Meaning, I guess, they had not received the most recent city maps, that's all.
I don't know what the year is on that, but it does show a little bit of detail compared to maybe 20 years ago from what I recall, doing some development out here. And what they do have now is they have actual cross-section numbers that show where their FEMA engineers did the analysis. And it shows specific elevations, for example, the New River, or excuse me, the Second Street Bridge, that's going to be replaced. And because of FEMA flood maps, it's got to be raised four feet to be free of the 100-year flood. Somebody had a question about the flood there. So, but that's the only area. Elsewhere in Callexico, there's nothing.
Okay, just asking.
In the report on the barriers, it refers to the Williamson Act. What is the Williamson Act?
I don't know.
It says here, Imperial County remains the only California county to opt out of the Williamson Act.
Williamson Act refers to an act that probably was established like in the mid-'60s. In general, as I recall, the act allows for agricultural areas to be designated as agricultural conservation or preservation areas. There's a contract, if I recall correctly, between the owner of the property and the county. There is reduced taxes, so the taxes are based on ag use, not on a future urban development type use. And the state did subventions to cover- And the state did subventions to cover the cost in terms of the decrease in property taxes generated by the ag properties. I believe the county board of supervisors opted out around 2010, 2010 from, from the program. The contracts that were in place there still run for whatever period of time is left in the tenure horizon. But there is, there's been no renewal of the Williamson Act contracts in Imperial County since 2010. But that basically was, it was a program, you know, like 50 years ago, basically to say, how can we preserve ag land in California? So, the idea was not to tax the owners of ag land on urban uses if they promised to keep their land in ag uses.
What happened to those lands that have been converted since to the solar panel? It's no longer ag land.
I have no idea whether those were under Williamson Act to begin with. But the contract would have lasted for 10 years, so I would assume that for any use like that to replace the ag use, the contract would have had to end, to have been terminated.
Is this something that the county would address with the cities or just something that they acted on their own? No idea.
When my reviews of the Imperial Valley press going back to that period of time is there were the ag interest in the county imploring the board of supervisors to keep the program. But it didn't prevail, that argument.
I'm sorry, who was?
The, the agriculture.
They were lobbying the supervisors to keep the program?
Right.
But it didn't go through?
No. That was my recollection from reviewing the Imperial Valley press articles for that period of time.
Interesting. Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Castañeda, where is this Callexico Community Garden Park? Or is that in the future works?
The, the, where is it at in terms of conceptually where we would? Well, the area we were thinking of is, now, don't hold me to it that that would actually be the area if the concept ever got further along, but it would be the former El Portal area.
El Portal?
The, the. Do you know where it is?
I don't.
Page two?
No, page two, but where's that? I'm sorry? Cole and Andrade? Across the street from Circle K? Okay. Carried corner across, right. So, next to the current project? In some close proximity to the current project going up right now?
Yes.
The trailer park?
Yeah.
It's not a trailer park.
Okay, it's.
Free manufacturer homes.
Manufacturer homes.
Now, if I could just elaborate, the.
Yes, please.
During the course of this, this project, the city and myself have been very much in contact with the Imperial County Public Health Department. Not only, mainly because of the health issues, the location of healthy foods in relationship to this city's neighborhoods and so forth. And they've been trying to come up with ideas in terms of how they could promote healthy eating habits, healthy nutrition. So, the idea that's been explored is a park, but one that also focuses on sustainability, on nutritious products, and having children learn from experts about all that and the growing, but also have it in a park environment so that the parents can be there with their children. It's a broad conceptual idea. It's, it's one that certainly the health department would want to explore and partner with the city. In terms of location, again, that's only an idea.
Okay. Would they be also inviting our, our FFA students to participate or?
I think so, I mean, a lot of things have to be worked out. I mean, the, the idea is if, if the idea seems something to merit, then let's go to the next step.
To do it as a community, right.
See what can do.
Okay. Touching on the next item here, can you explain to me what this State Employment Development Department, what is it, they created an NAICS?
Okay. One of the byproducts of the project, not only has been like working and getting a collaboration with the health department, but also working with a variety of state departments as well. The Employment Development Department is the, the one that monitors employment within all of California and cities and so forth. We were able to work with them to give the city an Excel database of all the employers located in Callexico. By address, by number of employees in terms of range, by the contact person, by the phone number, by the email, excuse me, not the email. So, it, it basically is a, is a database of all employers in the city. And that, in a, in a North American industrial code classification system, is simply a way to categorize an employer's use in terms of industry or agriculture or retail or administrative. It's, it's, it's a coding system. It's, it's, it's a system that was developed by Mexico, US, and Canada, so there would be comparability in how they recorded information on employer, employment and employers, and they could make comparisons. And it replaced an older coding system. But I don't want to get too much into mechanics, other than saying it allows some categorization of employers.
So, who's going to maintain that information? Who's going, who's going to monitor that information?
I've given the, 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 the most recent Excel database, as well as one that was printed, more in printed form, to Julia. And then, there is a contact at the state out of San Diego, who I think, he updated it twice for us. So, I think once the city starts contacting him, he will continue to update it. I think it's an update every six months.
Every six months?
Mm-hmm. Now, if I can just elaborate a little bit more. I thought one of the values of that employer database would also be to keep a pulse on what the employers are thinking about in terms of optimism, in terms of pessimism, in terms of expanding, in terms of relieving, all those kinds of issues through some types of periodic surveys. But that would be one way. Another use of the data would be to collect email addresses of all the employers, so that the city can communicate with them instantaneously on terms of any planning issue or, or that kind of information would be not filtered by the newspaper. I think it would just go directly from the city to the employer, once we have, you know, a database of email addresses. So, those are examples that I just tried to cite in terms of how one can use that information. But it is helpful that, that the state was able to cooperate with the city and start getting that information to them.
Okay. Thank you.
That information, is that, is that public or is that going to be confidential? Like the phone numbers, names of the merchants?
They, they never told me that it was confidential. The, the employees is in a range because that is confidential. And anything more specific than the range has to be on a one-to-one basis.
What about the employers? The employers themselves, like the business names and all that?
No, no, business names, it's all categorized, a business name.
Okay, would that be public?
Julia, what do you think?
Yes, it is.
Is that available to the general public?
Yes, it is.
Sorry. In terms of the air pollution, you know how the Imperial Valley is overwhelmed with asthma kids, especially Callexico. How is the city going to address that in this?
Air pollution per se was not directly analyzed as part of this. When you get to the SEQA document.
Right.
In terms of, when the commission gets to the point of being satisfied with the document in some form, then the SEQA can start and that'll be looked at in greater detail and so you'll have that then. But I do realize the issue that you're raising with asthma and those kinds of things.
Right. I, I thought it will, it will take part or play a part with the emissions control and all that, thermal plants, all that. It's air pollution causing a lot of this asthmatic problems. So, I thought that would be addressed under all this. But it's, I thought it would be under, addressed under all this, but it's not, it's a separate issue.
We'll take a look at it though.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Question. Can, can we use a retention basin as a park? Is that possible or not?
What's, what's it?
To use, to create a park at a retention basin?
They're being used right now, some of them are.
So, is, can we do it? It's not dangerous, although shave metal going in there when it rains? I just want to make sure, sorry, because if we can, that's a great thing.
There's two schools of thoughts. Since a retention basin is taking all the runoff from the streets, sidewalks, yards, pesticides, you know, dog, cat stuff. The idea is that there's a lot of hazardous.
Contaminants.
There you go, thank you. That are going into the basin and therefore the kids are playing around, dust is particulate, going all over the place they're bringing and so on. The county, at the request of, not, not by us, but by somebody, did an analysis of soil and they came up with a, I guess, a summary that it's not any unhe, more unhealthy than it is any other place.
Really?
That was from another agency, not us.
So.
I don't, I don't, I'm not saying that it's correct or not, or what the, what the essence of the study was and if it's even accurate. I'm just stating.
The, the park that they did that to, the Rising Park, correct?
Yes.
It's not a park.
I mean, the, the field. Is that for the public?
It's a field.
Yeah.
It's a retention basin that is being, having dual use as a ballpark of sorts and retention basin.
Okay, my question is, is that for the public? Or the person that put the fence in, he gets to play first, and how, how does that work?
No, all parks are for the public.
But who do you ask permission to go play baseball there? They're there, and what if we get there and they tell us, you know, move out of there? Who, who's in control of it?
We need, we need to know that. I don't maintain the parks anymore, so it would be Nick Finley's group that needs to know about this so that they can not let anybody monopolize the use of the parks. And that's part of the problem that we had traditionally where people adopt parks and they assume that they have ownership of the parks, which is not so. Still, they think that.
That's the one that they recently approved the lighting, correct?
No, it was.
That's the one?
Fifth, Fifth and Andrade.
Oh.
Just south there, yeah. I'm working on a plan for, to get some lights there, no.
Thank you, Nick.
I, I just make a, just a brief comment. I think we need more of mixed use and, you know, more housing project. We used to have a real nice housing project coming to Callexico and all this stopped, you know. We'd like to see more gated communities coming into, into Callexico. Things that have some recreation and sport facilities and a swimming pool. We need to think a little bigger than what, you know, maybe a little out, I don't, out of the box. You know, Callexico has not been growing for the last, I would say, maybe five years. It's very, very slow growth. And I know the, the reason is for the housing project, many of them left and housing crisis. But I think we need to come back and, and come back strong with nice project. Expand, expand the housing project, gated communities, more parks in the cities. You know, they don't expand to the east, they need to expand it to the east as well, more to the north. Bring in more industrial zoning, more commercial. I think we need, we need the growth, we need all of that. But we haven't seen anything coming up, anything new is coming to Callexico. There's still many locations that are closed. And we need to start thinking about how to fill those up, to fill vacant lot within the cities. You know, it seems like, you know, there's no energy and we need to bring back this energy and bring back this housing project that used to have some real nice project. And maybe look into impact fees that the city has. That's something for the council, I can speak for the council. But need to look at impact fees, need to look at why is development is not going on? Why they're not coming here? Is that, are the schools are the reason? Is the impact fee is the reason? What is that? I mean, we have good things to offer here in Callexico. And let's, you know, continue the growth and let's continue to prosper. Thank you.
Everything you said, I agree.
Nick, question. I think other cities, when they have a house that's burned down, that nobody, you know, finished cleaning it, the, the city does it themselves and then they put a lien on it.
Not necessarily. None, that's a last resort.
Why don't we do that too?
Define last resort, because there's some things that.
Well, I'll, I'll cite a case in point. Case in point is over on Rockwood and, is it 10th? Rockwood and 10th. Apparently what happened there is that house burned. The owners, for some reason, abandoned the house. We went after the bank, the bank didn't want anything to do with it. Nobody was taking responsibility. So, it took us a long time to finally go through the legal system. Now, the legal system is working against us because they don't want to have us go in there, we, the city, go in there and demo a house. That's, that is their stance right now. So, it, finally, we did prevail, but only after being imposed with some conditions. You can only demolish the house if you do A and B. We did A and B and there you go, the house is gone. But it took a long time. So, it's not as easy as people think that, oh, house burned down and the owner doesn't have any money or anything and the city, go ahead and tear it down. It's not that easy. We try to work with the owner or we try to work with the bank or both. And hopefully, with that attitude, we prevail. You know, it's a win-win situation for everybody. But it's not that easy.
Maybe a different angle, maybe it's a safety issue.
Well, it's always a safety issue because once it burns down, and I think we have a few others, right? That we're working with the owners and the banks to try to get those resolved. And.
You know, if the house is burning down, you're going to go there whether it be your permission or not, right? Because it's a safety issue.
Well, yes, yes.
Maybe look at it that way, you can get away with what you want and not have to go through all that time lapse. I'm just saying, I thought other cities, I thought it was easier than that, I thought that.
Yeah. Let me let Ralph add a few more words to that.
The one on Rockwood and 10th, I think that took us about four or five years. We finally took it to the court system to get permission to go in there and be able to tear it down. After we had tried every avenue to locate the, the owners, the court went ahead and, and they, they denied our, our request and basically told us, well, you, you can go ahead and do it. Do it on, you know, you take your chances, your risk. The, the, the other problem is, is funding. To tear a house down will run you anywhere between 30 to 50,000 because it, it, it'll run you about almost $20,000 just to do the demolition on it. And you're looking at prevailing wage, you're looking at, also have to check and see whether there's any business and lead base. If there is, then it's going to cost you more to get a company to come in and do that. You put, you, you do, the city has the ability to put a lien on the property. But by the time the property, the money is collected, it can, it can be a while. But, but I'm lying, it's also funding, it's something that the city right now doesn't have. So, it makes it very difficult to find the funding to go in there and do the demolition. Like Nick brought out, we have, I think, two, three houses. We have one that they started doing the demolition and for whatever reason, they stopped halfway. On that one, it was a situation where we tried to get ahold of the owner. The owner had gone to Mexico to visit a daughter. While she was over there, she passed away. Then we had to try and find out who was going to take responsibilities. It was a family, I think, of six, seven, and nobody wanted to take responsibility. Everybody wanted the profits from, from selling the property, but nobody wanted to take the responsibility of selling. So, we did go try to work with the attorney on that one. Finally, they opt to sell the property. When the new buyer bought it, it got to a certain point and then they stopped. Unfortunately, they did. Uh, unfortunately, they did take a permit. Uh, we have to wait the hundred and eighty days, uh, for the permit to expire. Then we can start going after the owner at this point, uh, but the only thing we can do is give warnings. We have another one where there was a fire. Uh, we got a hold of the owner, uh, that lives out of town. The owner, uh, promised that we're going to come in. We, we, uh, they never did. We called him again, the same thing. Uh, so we have sent him various citations and trying to get their, their attention to come in. I think the citations is now at the point of a thousand dollars every time we send it out, plus whatever other citations we have. They're, they either have no interest in the property or anything, and it will get to the point where the city has to go in. Now, on that property, it is going to take, uh, pretty close to fifty, sixty thousand dollars, not only to tear down the structure, but to clean the property because there's some trees and there's a lot of weeds. It's a large, uh, property. We have another one that every time we send a citation, we have the owner come in, they promise they're going to do it. They, they go out there and nothing is done and it's just a, it's just a game. It's a, uh, cat and mouse game that we have. So i- i- it makes it difficult, not only because of the legal system. It also makes it difficult because, uh, we don't really have the staff to be able to give the full attention to those items. But there's so many issues that there is that, uh, it just, we just can't concentrate on one issue.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. Yes, uh, what's next? Any more questions, Commissioner?
No.
Any Commissioner comments?
No comment.
No?
I only have one, uh, I don't know if you're going to have a meeting for October the 12th, but I won't be available. Let you know upfront.
For?
October, Monday, October the 12th, I won't be available.
But you will be here for the.
Prior commitment. Yes, I'll be here for that. If you do have something for the 28th, I'll be here. The 12th, I will not.
Yeah, you, you did see the sign ordinance, uh, uh, a public meeting?
Well, I was going to ask you about that. Thank you for bringing it up. Did you, uh, you said a date, but did you talk to any of the commissioners if they were available on that day? Okay. Are you available the 23rd?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's going to be on the 20, uh, not the 23rd, but it's going to be on the 24th, which is on a Thursday. Basically, we, we're, I think at the, at the request of, of not only the Planning Commission, but I think there were some, some comments that were made also from the public that they didn't, they didn't want it on the same night as a Planning Commission meeting.
Uh, no, I understand that part.
Okay.
No, I understand that part. As a matter of fact, you don't make a mention of it here, is that whoever was in the audience present, who could or could not be now on this commission, is they, uh, requested that the temporary signage be first. And there's no mention here of temporary signage?
And that's correct. I think what they wanted first was the permanent sign.
No, no, they wanted the temporary. You know, I'm sorry, you're right. They wanted the permanent.
The permanent sign. And yes, and, and we're going to correct it because what we're doing is we're going to put another notice. And, and instead of being Wednesday, the 23rd, it will be Thursday, the, uh, the 24th.
Okay, again, I.
We got the date wrong.
I have to ask you the question. Again, when you set the date, did you speak to any of the commissioners if we were all available on that day?
Well, being a public meeting, then basically, I mean, the, the commisioner, commissioners are invited. It, it's not.
Oh, okay, this is not, we're not going to be.
It's not going to be a, a Planning Commission meeting.
So.
It's a public meeting.
Okay, so this is.
We, we do invite the commissioners to be here. We want their, their participation on it. But I think that was the request that was made, that they didn't want it on a Planning Commission night.
Regular meeting, yes, but I, I would, um, to me, my, my interpretation is they were fine if it was just for that, not on a regular Planning Commission meeting. Like a special meeting or whatever.
The last time, it was a workshop, but we had it kind of like in a meeting.
So you're going to have a workshop on the 24th?
On, on the 24th, yeah. It will be a workshop.
Of September?
Excuse me?
Of September?
Yes.
Of September, yeah.
Has anybody been notified? Because nobody knows about this workshop you guys are trying to have.
It was put in the paper. It was advertised. We're, we're going to, uh, uh, put it in the paper again.
Which paper?
It was.
Mark?
What work is that?
Callexico Chronicle.
Yeah, Callexico Chronicle.
It's not like everybody reads the Chronicle though. That's.
Not everybody reads the Ivy Press either. Um, so it's, it's kind of difficult. What we'll try to do also, we'll try to leave some of the, the announcement with some of the, uh, uh, businesses as, as we can. Or the other thing we could do is we'd be more than happy to make some copies. And, uh, some of you commissioners, if you would like to help, can help us, uh, pass these out.
I thought you guys were going to hand these out with, uh, the water bill or mail them out or mail out notifications. That's what, when I was sitting down there, that was the, the thing.
There was, there was one of the recommendations, yeah.
But obviously that recommendation was.
Well, it's a timing issue, that's why.
Yeah.
Because I mean, I don't think anybody's really going to show up to the 24th, to the meeting, because nobody was aware of this. And I saw a bunch of those people that were sitting here with me for about the signage and they had no idea about the, the workshop that you guys are going to hold on the 24th of this month.
Well, like I said before, we, we can make, we'll have some extra, uh, copies made and we'd be more than happy to provide this to, to the commissioners and we'll try to, uh, uh, as we go out, leave some of the notices and some of the, uh, businesses.
The bid?
You got to understand that most of the people that are here for the signs are not members of the chamber or the bid. I mean, they are part of the bid, but they don't come to the bid meetings. They.
And, and, and you're talking about it one week away. How are you going to spread the news to get these people here? I mean, the, the whole idea was to have them, have it done in September, but I don't think we're giving the people enough notice on this.
You know what, Commissioner? I'll, I'll take care of it. Um, I'll grab a couple of people tomorrow. We're going to pass out some flyers either way for, uh, some stuff we're going to do. So if you could give me about two hundred sheets.
Okay.
I'll make sure that everybody has them.
We'll go ahead and, yeah, if we can come by in the afternoon, that way it gives us time to, to fix this up and, and then we'll have it ready.
Tomorrow?
Now, uh, we're addressing just the downtown or you're in town?
No, we're addressing.
No, just all permanent signs, all permanent.
We're addressing the, the, the sign ordinance dealing with permanent signs.
Yeah.
But the whole business sector?
It's for the city, Callexico.
So this is going to be an informal workshop for the merchants? There, you guys are going to tell them or give them direction of what is acceptable, what is not acceptable?
Yes, yeah, we'll, we'll have some samples there.
So Mr. Morales, Mr. Serbin, and Mr. Vazquez will be sitting right here. And well, I'll be over there, getting with the tomatoes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take the shots.
Yeah, just make sure you move, just so, make sure you move around so we, it's more difficult to hit the target.
But anyway, like I said, we'll do Thursday. And, and this is our understanding that it was going to be informal.
Yes, informal, but man, short notice. Okay, Mr. Jason Jung, it's up to you to get the people in here.
I'll get them in here. I'll make a phone call soon as I leave here.
Now, if, if it's, if it's a pleasure of the, of the Planning Commission, we could change the date and, and, uh, probably would end up being maybe the first part of October. I mean, I don't know.
It's up to you.
It may be up to you. That way we can still send out a, a notice within, uh, either this week or, yeah, we can send out a notice this week. And that would give them.
Is it too much trouble just putting on the bill for next month?
Well, then they, now you're going into the middle, to the latter part of October.
I don't know when the billing goes out. I'm not sure when it goes out.
You, you want to pick a date in October?
You, that you have a close, uh, relationship with these people.
Yes.
Uh, for whatever the reason, is the, do you think it's going to be okay with them to wait till October?
I think they'll be fine with it.
Okay.
Wasn't Morris griping that he didn't, that come on, it's going to be almost Christmas time?
No, no, he, no, his gripe was on the temporary signs.
And you know, he wasn't cited, so the other people that have permanent signage, they were the ones cited right now and they have pending hundred and fifty dollar fines from the city. And they can't, you know.
You haven't cited Mr. Morris if he has.
Oh, Mr. Morris has received more than one, one citation.
There you go.
So. He has been cited. No, has he, has it been paid?
That's a different issue, right?
Yeah.
That's under a different discussion.
Yeah.
That's up to the finance department.
Except for who?
That's up to the finance department.
That's up to the finance.
But do you guys want to pick a date for next month?
We could even do it on the Monday if, 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 but it would, it would be an informal meeting.
Right, we don't have to be here. It's staff.
Huh?
We don't have to be here. It's your staff.
Well, I mean, we, we, we're, we're putting the invitation to the Planning Commission to be here, um, since you're the, the spokesperson for the, for council member.
Justin, is there a chance to collect some tomatoes?
Oh, I keep bringing a box. Don't worry about that.
No, no, they're going to throw them at you.
October, October 12th, would that work for, for everybody?
I just said a little while ago, I'm not going to be here until October.
Oh, you're not going to be here October?
But we're not going to do it on the meeting day.
Yeah, we're not going to do it on a meeting day.
How about the?
Other than Monday.
The 5th? Okay. When will you be here?
What about the Tuesday that is? You know what? Do it at council meeting date so we can take over the council meeting and they can go somewhere else.
Okay, we'll do it on the 6th.
Bring your pumpkins.
A Tuesday that doesn't have a council meeting, how's that?
The 13th and.
Okay, October 13th. I'll let everybody know.
31st, that way everybody can come.
Halloween?
Yeah.
Well, hey, that might work.
On a Saturday?
Okay, October 13th, everybody's.
Jason, Commissioner?
We're good.
October 13th.
Okay, we will check to see where they can be put on the.
Ay, ay, ay. Oh, and while you're providing, you have two hundred sheets in English. You'd need to get them out in Spanish as well.
Both.
Double sided.
Double sided, there you go.
We'll even do pictures.
Can you do it in Korean too? Because, uh, some of them don't speak English.
Do you need any, any other language?
Arabic?
We could do, what? There's Arabic, Korean. We have a large Korean population downtown.
All right.
Cantonese.
Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
If there's anything else, my motion.
Second? I'll second. Me and adjourn.